You know, we don't know them all that well yet, but they seem very nice.
Okay.
Yeah. Although they don't really trick. They're both doctors.
Okay, good evening, everyone. And welcome to tonight's Board of Ed meeting. The date is Tuesday, May 8th, 2018. And I would appreciate if everyone turns off their cell phones as this meeting is being recorded. Ellen, can you please do our roll call?
Thank you, Chairperson Granato. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Cassio?
Present.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Mr. Healy? Ms. McCurdy?
Here.
Ms. Moon?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mrs. Paradise?
Here.
Vice Chairperson, Mr. Hill. Chairperson, Mrs. Granato?
Here.
And Weathersfield High School Student Representative, Mr. Justin Bianchi. All present.
Thank you. I want to invite a group from Emerson Williams School, it's a daisy troop, to come on up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to all of you. Okay, Mr. Emmett, I understand we have two recognitions tonight, too.
We do. Actually, if we could have Mrs. Gallivan and the rest of the daisies come up, please. We'd love to see you at the podium.
Oh, my God.
That was just rehearsal, the first time you came up.
Well, thank you for welcoming us this evening. We're very honored to be here. And we want to give special recognition to our daisy troop. These are first graders from Emerson Williams School. They are responsible, intelligent, caring, creative, fun-loving girls, and they're growing up to be wonderful leaders and responsible young women in our community. We'd like to introduce them to you. We are, or here is Willa, and Tiffany, Lydia, Friday. We also have Ariana, and Sarah, Caroline, Jacenia, and Olivia. And I'm sure you will be seeing much more of them around town. We are troop 10300, and we very much appreciate all of your support in the school systems at Emerson Williams and all you do to help us at the Board of Education. So we're going to tell you a little bit about what we do and what we've been doing this year. This is our first year as daisies, and we're looking forward to bridging to become brownies next year.
My name's Lauren McPhail. I'm also one of the leaders, along with Gina, and Sam, and Mary. This is all our first year as leaders, too, so even though there's nine girls and four adults, we do sometimes feel outnumbered. So some of the fun things that we did this year, we started our troop in December, and we decorated Christmas ornaments and gave them to a local nursing home. We also dropped off items at the local food pantry before the holidays. We also have been learning throughout the school year about how to care for animals and also how to care for ourselves. So we had a representative from the Humane Society come in, and we learned all about how to take care of animals. And part of what we did afterwards to follow up on that was to donate animal supplies to the Humane Society in Newington. So we donated food and toys and things like that for the animals. We also, in practicing care for ourself, focused on teaching the girls how to do meditation, how to calm our bodies, how to relax, and how to sort of take time, care for ourselves. Last night, we made meditation jars at our meeting, which were water and corn syrup and glitter, and you turn them upside down, and you watch the glitter settle, and it's very calming. So that was a big hit. One of the other fun things that we did was we cleaned up the wood parcel in town with Senator Murphy, and we look forward to doing lots more fun things in the community next year. Thank you.
That was wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. Gina, how old are, what grade is this?
First grade.
First grade? Mm-hmm. That's so cute. Thank you. We have another recognition?
We do. If I could please have our friends from Hanmer School come up to the podium?
We're going to start with a special report from our Hanmer Hoot, so please direct your attention to the screen.
Good to go? Okay.
Good evening. This is a special report from the Hanmer Hoot. Hanmer students have been making a difference this school year. We have all been inspired by the book Wonder by R.J. Palack. The message written between all of the pages is that when given the choice between being bright or being kind, choose kind. At Hanmer School, we are respectful, accountable, safe, and we make a difference, and we choose kind. Here are some of the ways we have demonstrated that so far this year. We created an emoji scarecrow display on Main Street that addressed the importance of recycling and reusing. We collected money through trick-or-treat for UNICEF. We raised money for children at CCMC by wearing pajamas to school. We raised money for ALS by voting on our favorite teacher's holiday attire in a penny war. We collected 122 pounds of candy from the troop's silver seeds. We wrote Valentine cards to veterans and thank you letters to members of our community, including police, fire, and ambulance workers. We wrote cards to children who were hospitalized during the holidays, and we collected food for our food bank. While this school year is coming to an end, our good deeds are enough. While we are here today to invite you to participate in one of our last acts of kindness this year, the Kindness Rocks Project. On June 15th, which is our field day, each student at Hanmer School will be painting a rock with a message of positivity, a kind word, phrase, quote, or image that can help to brighten someone's day. These will be placed altogether in a permanent display in front of Hanmer School. They will form a heart to symbolize the impact of choosing kind. Through this interactive display, we will experience how kindness is a boon. It's an easy thing to pass on, and it often comes back. So if you're not busy on June 15th and would like to make a difference, come on over to Hanmer and choose kind of us. You won't regret it. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
I can't change the world with my own two hands. Make it a better place with my own two hands.
And?
That's great.
Yes, thank you. So that was a special report. Sophie Adams, who's an anchor for our weekly broadcast, who put that together with the sixth graders. And the act of kindness that she was referring to is displayed in front of you, some examples that were created by sixth graders in preparation for June 15th. The idea is that by adding a small message of positivity, no matter how small, it could really brighten someone's day. This is a national project that has a lot of different installations and many different forms around the country, and lots of people pick up on it. You might have found them at Broad Street Green in a tree. I've heard that they're there. I heard they're in parks all over. But Hanmer would love to participate and make our mark, too, and help one another. I have some friends with me, Ms. Talia, Ms. Olivia, and Mr. Jaden, and Ms. Salvira, who have some more words of positivity, and hopefully they'll brighten your day. These are some inspiration, inspirational quotes that are going to go on some of our rocks.
Okay. Be your own biggest fan. It never rains forever. Be mindful. Believe there is good in the world. Persist. Instead of why me, say try me. Dare to dream. You are perfect the way you are.
When you forgive, you heal. Let your light shine. Love deeply. Now is the best time. Inspire. Make a wish. Laugh. Be a fruit loop in a world of Cheerios. The best is yet to come, and smile.
Smile. See the light in others. Rock on. There's...
There's something in you that the world needs. Be grateful. You are the author of your own story. You belong.
So again, this is an invitation for the community to join us. We have more than enough rocks that were donated by Cedar Mountain Mulch in Newington. They were so gracious in their donation of about a ton of rocks that my husband so nicely moved for us. And we're excited to continue with this initiative that Mrs. Greer has brought to our school.
The pause in, first of all, I would like to thank Mrs. Weaver for putting this together. The pause in her voice was because this was absolutely a team effort. And although I brought the idea of choosing kind to our PBS team, as well as to Hanmer School, I think it was really important, the fact that it was already started at Hanmer School. We talk about being accountable, respectful, and safe, and the fact that we make a difference. And I think the added word that we all agreed on was the idea of choosing kind, making it something that you intentionally set out to do. When we decided on the book, We're All Wonders, which was our One School, One Book, the idea was to bring us all together to understand the importance of that very small thing, to making a choice, to not just solving the problem, but solving it in a kind way. So I thank her. I thank this fantastic representative of sixth grade class, and all the people at Hanmer School, our entire community, that really decided that that was the one piece that we were really going to focus on this year, that idea of not just making a difference and not just being problem solvers, but doing it in a kind way. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Hanmer School. We just had a discussion last week on our strategic plan about teaching social and emotional skills, so thank you for showing us that.
I've been asked to have the rocks handed down this way because they belong out at Hanmer and not on our desk.
They should be seen, though. They're kind of neat.
They are very cool.
They are really cool.
Oh, this is...
Those are really nice.
No throwing.
Yeah, no throwing.
John, you're not... John, you hogging yours?
No, we passed it down.
Okay.
We were the first ones to let it go.
Reluctantly.
We need to share.
Could I just, okay. Okay, thank you.
I would just like to say to the students who came up tonight, and especially those who spoke, I really, really appreciate your bravery at speaking at the podium. I know that's not easy, so thank you very much for providing us with a great start to our meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Next on tonight's agenda is the approval of the minutes of our regular Board of Ed meeting on April 24th, 2018. Anyone see any corrections? Okay, may I have a motion to approve them?
It's all moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Those minutes are approved. So now, if there's anyone who wishes to come up and speak at our podium, please state your name and address, and may I remind you that we have a five-minute limit. Okay. Mr. Emmett, you have communication to share?
I do. Thank you, Mrs. Granato. Good evening, everyone. Just a reminder that next Tuesday marks the date at which the town council must allocate the budget, so we're certainly in the final throes of preparation for that. As we know, Mr. Healy and Mr. Hill are up on the Hill this evening, dealing with the state budget, so we wait to see what's coming from the state. This week marks Teacher Appreciation Week across the country. Here in Weathersfield, we're fortunate to have a team of dedicated and compassionate teachers who strive to ensure that our students receive the best possible education. To all of our Weathersfield teachers, we say thank you. Thank you very much. In addition, tomorrow, School Nurse Day takes place. In an official statement, Governor Malloy states that School Nurse Day recognizes the important role nurses play in our schools and expresses his gratitude for the outstanding dedication to the success and wellness of Connecticut's future generations. And again, I can't say enough for the professionalism of our nursing staff here in the Weathersfield Public Schools. Congratulations go out to Silas Dean for an exceptional effort on the CAPS Middle School of the Year competition. We finished as the runner-up, number two. The school was lauded for its student-centered approach in support of the leader-leader model. Students, staff, and parents at Dean have a lot to be proud of. The Teacher of the Year process has kicked off. The annual Teacher of the Year nomination process actually has begun for the selection of next year's Teacher of the Year, and we expect to announce the winner in early June. With regard to negotiations, we are currently engaged, or will be engaging, in negotiations with three bargaining units. We're currently working with Secretarial and Paris. Nurses will be commencing shortly, as will custodial and maintenance. Please check your calendars for upcoming dates if you serve on a negotiating committee. Some good news here, the State Department of Education has asked the district to attend a meeting before the State Board of Education to share what we have done to increase student achievement at Hanmer School that has placed it into the School of Distinction category over the past two years. That meeting will take place on May 30th, up in Hartford, so more for you on that as it approaches. Last week, I attended the CAPS Assessment and Accountability Committee meeting. It is a committee that I serve on and have done so for the past three years. We discussed a variety of topics, including some potential changes to the accountability indices that the districts are measured by. Many in attendance expressed concern about yet another change to that system, and that change, or those changes, would make comparing growth over time much more difficult to measure. I will say that the State Department of Education has been responsive to our concerns in the past in other areas, and they certainly value the input of the superintendent group. Spring concerts, recognition ceremonies, Dollar for Scholars, academic awards, family events are popping up all over on the calendar. Please refer to your district website, or the district website for dates and times, and also your calendars as well. We've received notice of potential hurricane and disaster relief funding provided by the United States Department of Education. Mr. Kazaka and I participated in a conference call this morning with the State Department of Education to outline this application process. As is often the case, the turnaround time on this funding is very short. We received the application last Friday, and it's due on May 15th, so we are currently working on that. The total available funds will be determined through the submission of our student data and will be weighted for both ELL, Special Ed status, as well as time students have spent in the district. And with that, that's communications.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from Michael? John?
Why would we have any eligibility for hurricane funding?
We, with regard to Hurricane Maria specifically, we saw an influx of students come in from Puerto Rico. The last count was a total of 16 students, and as we have brought the students in and they've been with us over the course of the year, we are eligible for funding.
Could I just follow up?
Polly?
So in the event that there were students then from any, who had to come from any relief, or from any hit area, like for instance, the Houston area...
Correct.
...or Florida or anything like that...
Correct.
...that would just help us absorb our costs a little?
Correct.
Or offset our costs?
Exactly. We're talking about the natural disasters, Harvey, Irma, Maria, and the California wildfires.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thank you, Michael. Okay, so under action items tonight, we do have quite a few motions. John Morris, would you please read Motion 6A for us?
Move that the Weathersfield Board of Education approve the superintendent to submit a grant under the RFP for a family learning program, a two-generational learning for adult education for the time period July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2019.
Second. Okay. Is there any discussion? I'd like to read the objective that was in the grant because it is, it's so important, and I had had the opportunity to go down and visit at this family learning program. So it gives 20 families access to a free, high-quality family literacy program, which combines English language learning, early childhood education, workforce development, and parenting education in one central location, with the ultimate goal of reducing the achievement gap amongst ESL students. The family learning program objectives are to recruit and retain 20 families who will have a four-point gain or more as measured for pre- and post-testing. The family learning program also seeks to measure and improve employment status of our families. One program supports the goals of building an educated and competitive Connecticut workforce while helping adults acquire skills and knowledge necessary to obtain employment and become full partners in the educational development of their children. And as I said, I visited a couple of times. It is a fabulous setup that they're working on, and this would get it to continue. Any other discussions? Okay. Polly?
And this is a, basically, this has been, is a continuation of a grant that's been, that we've had before?
Yes.
Okay. So we really have to reapply every year then for it?
Right. And we do have the person who'll be collecting data on this, too.
Right, right.
That came with the Hartford Foundation grant.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that motion passes. 6B was going to be Kevin. I think I have it right here. So Kevin, move, not Kevin, the recommended motion, move that the Board of Ed approve the attached proposed schedule of the regular Board of Education meetings for the 2018-2019 school year.
It's all moved.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion on this? John?
I just have a curiosity question. We're scheduled to meet on Christmas Day?
Yeah, as it gets closer, Jen, we'll likely have to cancel that one.
Right, so I just...
So cancel your plan.
You can drop your gifts off at the house before.
This is a standard second and fourth Tuesday of the month, so as these dates come up, we will look to cancel and then reschedule as needed.
Well, I know, we're dedicated.
We are.
Commit it was a better choice of words.
Okay, any other discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion 6B passes. 6C, Elaine?
Move that the Weathersfield Board of Education approve a revised policy 5300, which states it revised high school graduation requirements. This came back from the original, the state wanted us to go to 25 credits from 21.5, but the state didn't have the money to fund the classroom teachers that would be needed to have more classes to achieve 25 credits for each student. So they pulled back their funding, and they pulled back their requirement, so that's why we are having this policy. Needs to be approved tonight.
Okay, is there a second on this?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Michael?
Yeah, I just want to be clear with this one. This is not one that I'm really fond of, quite frankly. I don't think optically it looks good. You know, we wanted to kind of get ahead of the curve with where the state was headed with graduation requirements, and, you know, the state has kind of kicked the can down the road year after year, and it's, you know, this graduating class it starts with, then it's the next graduating class, and then down it goes. The reality here is that our students are still going to have opportunities to engage in rigorous coursework. They'll still have multiple electives, and the vast majority of our students, even with a 22.5 credit graduation requirement, will far exceed that. We just need to make sure that we are taking care of our students that are going to get to that cusp where they're going to have to get to just that 22.5 mark. To make it to the 25 mark, where I don't have the staff available to offer the sections to cover those courses for kids, it's just, it's not doable, and it's really disingenuous. So I want to make sure everybody in the public is well aware of the fact that we still have the expectation of high-quality instruction.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? So Motion 6C passes. John Cassio, would you read Motion 6D for us?
Absolutely. Move that the Weathersfield Board of Education approve to engage in Phase 1 school study towards long-term capital improvements program. A little bit of background, we discussed it at our last meeting, but our Facilities and Maintenance Committee has met with the planning firms of Colliers International and Engineering Consultants of Malone and McBroom to discuss a baseline for Weathersfield's elementary schools and middle school to determine the district's needs. The committee is looking to implement Phase 1 Plan of Study, which would develop a 10-year enrollment projections and will conduct capacity and utilization studies of all existing schools to determine current and future space deficiencies.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this? Any questions? We have our representatives here, too. Okay, all right, so we'll move on. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion 6D passes. Thank you. Okay, Motion 6E, Ginger?
Move that the Weathersfield Board of Education approve a memorandum of understanding with the Town of Weathersfield for the transfer of school custodial functions from the Board of Education to the Town of Weathersfield.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this? Polly?
I just wanted to make a couple of, just clarify a couple of things. First of all, under Appendix A, where one of the functions is carpentry, and also a list of custodial duties, electrical work, plumbing, HVAC, maintenance, and operation. I just wanted to make sure that including in that was basically all maintenance, such as painting, or any type of, anything that is continued, would be continued with what they're, what's being done now. I just didn't see whether it was spelled out.
Not enforced.
Yeah. So is that the case?
We don't have a painter.
Okay, but that would be, that would be something that would be included. So it's basically any kind of general update?
They do.
Yeah, okay. And then the other question I had was, at the bottom, it also refers to the CSEI, SEIU... SEIU, Local Two Thousand One Union. The employee, it would be one employee that would come from, that would be included in this agreement who would move over as a, to the town?
Yes.
Okay. And that's the individual who presently works for, is, works in the custodial area-
They're going to be interviewed.
-or works for the maintenance, or works for Fred. That's the administrator?
No, the position that is currently, we're preparing to interview for would be a supervisor position of maintenance and custodial.
Okay.
It would be a town position.
Right, right. Okay, and then this individual would then, would instead, because there would be no need for it, and the Board of Ed would then be, become a town employee?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right, that's all I need.
Okay. Diane?
What are the budget implications of this? Are we paying the town, or how is this affecting our budget and the town's budget?
Ginger?
I can give you a little bit of background on that from the shared services standpoint. As you all know, from earlier reports this year, we, the Shared Services Committee originally said, this is a great idea, let's combine, let's do this. And then on advice from various people, including the town manager, we decided that it was going to be too expensive to do, that it made sense from an operational and synergistic standpoint, but not from a monetary standpoint. We were asked to reconsider that at a meeting on May first, and were told that in order to alleviate our concerns about the additional expense, that all expense except the base salary of the custodial supervisor, which we currently have budgeted at eighty thousand dollars, that all additional expense for overtime and everything else would be picked up under the town's side of the budget. So our exposure, if you will, is capped at eighty grand plus benefits, and then the rest will be picked up by the town.
So, all these custodians, are, all our custodians are now going to go over and be town employees?
Not immediately.
But when they do, is there going to be a transfer of funds between the Board of Ed, the allocations that we have in our budget, to the town budget?
That will ultimately happen, yes.
And that's going to be effective at the sign, of their new collective bargaining agreement?
Mm-hmm.
And has the union been notified that this is going to be-
Yes, they have.
At the place?
They have, Diane? Yes.
Am I understanding it correctly, the only, the custodial supervisor will be the only one on our payroll in time?
And eventually, all, eventually, all of these positions will shift over to the town.
Except that-
Our custodial, our custodial and our maintenance, even our maintenance supervisor-
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure that was what we were keeping. Okay, thanks for the clarification. John?
Yeah, the, the thought behind this, when it initially came out, just so, I think we discussed it, was that it was going to be more of a community effort. It was going to be Weathersfield, not the Board of Ed, not the Town Hall, and it was going to encompass Weathersfield's needs. That was what generated us to get into this talk. So that's, that's the motion moving forward, where, you know, the movement is to have a little bit more role and understanding of custodial needs. And, you know, as we grow with this idea and thought, there's, it's not going to be perfect immediately. People need to understand that, because we're already delayed in, in the hiring of this particular person. And our current individual is leaving shortly, so we thought there would be a transitional period where the new person that we were going to hire would be able to shadow the one that's leaving. I don't know if that's going to happen. So that's one of the concerns I think we had at the committee level at Shared Services, that that was really something that we're going to have to work on. But saying that, I think those that are behind it, understand it, and they will do their best so that it'll move forward in a positive way, so that, you know, the issues that are concerning over the summer that we do in our schools get accomplished. So I, I think, you know, we did bring a lot of that, right, Ginger, to the table when we had that discussion?
Yes, we had a pretty extended discussion about whether the things that we normally do during the summer will in fact happen this year. And they will happen. It may be a little bit of a short-term logistical nightmare, but it, because of the change in leadership for the custodians. But it will all happen and the schools will be gorgeous on opening day.
And the other thing is that the, the custodians will not lose any identity in the schools. They're still going to be Board of Ed employees, they're still going to have their same school, they're still going to have their same duties, it's just going to be a different administration, so to speak.
Eventually, they're not going to be one-
Eventually. But I don't know when that eventually is going to take place. But right now, they're Board of Ed employees.
John?
Do I correctly understand the eventually is when the next contract comes up? And that's next year, as I recall?
That's correct.
So this town will then take over that responsibility for that negotiation?
That's what will happen. I think with this negotiation, John, my understanding would be we would do this in collaboration. And that's not outside the norm of, of, you know, typicality. What we do, when we do custodians now is town sits in with us because there's a pension component that, that the town oversees. So I don't see that as a, you know, as a stumbling block. You know, from my perspective, you know, I'm going to be very upfront. I expect our buildings to be clean, I expect them to be safe, I expect them to be well-maintained, and I expect that if something needs to be done, there'll be a level of responsiveness there. That's, I think, a very simple and realistic expectation. I think that we have a custodial and maintenance staff that is well-versed, they're seasoned, they know the buildings very well, and I think that they will ultimately work collaboratively to make this work. We've done shared services with the IT, it's been successful. I see no reason why we can't make this work. I also see within the scope of the MOU, if we're not happy with this arrangement, we have the ability to revisit it, look to fix it, and if it's not fixable, then we exit it. The bottom line is I want to make sure that our kids have what they need to succeed. I also want to say too, that the intent with this arrangement is not to reduce jobs. You know, when I talked to the union, that was one of the concerns right up front, you know, oh, you're going to cut jobs. That is not the intent. You know, we ran lean this year with our custodial staff. We were down a position through the budget reductions this year. That position is in the budget for next year. We've had several retirements that we have actively looked to fill. I met with Fred today. I have a custodian that's going to be going out on medical leave, and we're already talking about making sure we have a sub-in for the summer so that we can get that building up and running. In addition to that, we hire our summer help, that is in process right now. You know, we can't afford to wait. As was mentioned by Mr. Cassio, we are running behind. I mean, typically speaking, we would have already interviewed, we would have had that transition plan in place. Right now, as it stands, we are looking at interviews for a total of five candidates this coming Friday. I've already met with Sally Katz and Stephanie Askland, Trent Donahue's been involved as well, to get going on those particular interviews. What we typically do on the school board side is we involve the union in terms of the, the process of interviewing. That is not changing. I will have a union rep on the interview committee on Friday. So again, I think they'll definitely be growing pains, it's certainly something that we will work hard to make successful.
Thank you. Diane?
This is, I'm glad to see this is finally coming to fruition. This has been a long time coming. Thirty years ago, when I worked for the town, Lee Erdman tried to do this. And for several years, we worked on trying to do this. So it's, it's a long time coming, and I think it's the way that municipalities and Boards of Ed are going to be moving towards in the future. And having, coming from another municipality who did this and shared these services, I think it's cost-effective and it will work out to the benefit of everyone involved.
John?
Just so that everyone does realize, there won't, we're not going to see a cost savings with this transition right now. We're looking at more of an efficiency in what we're doing. And eventually, we're hopeful that when it does get its legs and move forward, we'll begin to see savings. But right now, we're not going to see, you know, a big saving, so to speak, at the end of the day. But I think it's, it's something that, you know, we as a board and town have been looking at, so I'm supportive of this idea. And we'll do our best to make it positive for everybody.
Anyone else? Did we second this, Ellen?
I did.
Oh, you did? Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no more discussion, we'll have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion six E passes. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have the first reading of the proposed update to Policy five-seven-oh-oh on student discipline. Do we have any questions or comments? That was quite a lengthy read, too.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Yeah, if I, if I could, Madam Chair, this is an update of our current shipment and government policy. Now that we're working with the shipment and government policies, the way we've been able to do it is we can do the red line, so Deb incorporates all of the red line changes so you can actually see what's being changed. This is law-based, it's under the Student Section, and I certainly support its passage.
This is our first reading.
Correct.
Any other comments? Okay. All right, so we'll move on. We also had a first reading of the proposed update to Policy nine-five-three-oh, the official duties of the treasurer. So can the treasurer speak up about this?
Yeah, that's the reason why we're making the change.
All right. Do we have any questions or comments on this?
Well, I could share a little because I did the nine thousands before, in our, way back about sixty, seven years ago. And we do not have in our set of bylaws a treasurer, so the Policy Committee is thinking that we will be voting to take out the whole, the whole position of treasurer, because we're okay with a secretary slash vice chair that works in the state statute, so that's why the-
Even the salary, too.
That's the only, that's the only thing, is when I read it, I said, we don't have a treasurer, so we just wanted to bring it-
And this is to eliminate it, yeah.
Yes, this is about to eliminate it in the next read, I believe, Mike, right?
That's correct. That is correct.
Because we don't want a policy in there that we don't have, you know, people saying, oh, but you do have a treasurer, if they pull up treasurer in that search box.
Any other comments? Okay, so we'll move on. And we'll do our reports from our chairs. So Policy and Planning Committee, speaking of all that, Polly?
Yes, first of all, the minutes were included in your packet from our April twenty-sixth meeting. And really, the, the items that we discussed and passed on were the fifty-seven hundred, the student discipline, and also the ninety-five thirty, the official duties treasurer for the Board's review. The other thing that we will be working on at our next meeting is reviewing the Policy thirty-three hundred, which is purchasing, and we want to make sure that we cross-reference that with, with the K, well, it wasn't the K, but it was the previous Board policy, because this Board had made some changes to it, there were some additions. And also, we have, over the last couple of years, finalized a purchasing policy, or what do we call it? Purchasing procedures?
Right.
Yes. So that, that were developed by Mr. Kazaka and the Business Department, so we want to make sure there's no overlap there. Okay, so we will do that at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Polly. Shared Services, Ginger? We already discussed it a little, but tell us all about it.
Well, you know, it's basically, we spent the whole meeting talking about the motion that we just approved to the, for the combination of the custodial departments. And as John mentioned, you know, everybody was very much behind the synergistic moving forward of the combination and the long-term gains that that will afford us. We were a little concerned about the short-term pain that was going to be involved in it, both financially and Mr. Emmett was very kind not to point out that he had, you know, two applicant pools that he basically had to throw away because the plans changed a couple of times. And now we're under the gun and we're, we're going to get it done right, but we're going to have to get it done right and fast at the same time. But that was basically it. There was, as I said, the, the council asked us to revisit it, they felt very strongly that we should move forward. They, because they knew we were concerned about the financial aspect, they decided to absorb the financial increase on their side of the budget, which was, you know, I'm always in favor of them paying for our stuff, so that sounds like a great idea to me. The, one other thing I just wanted to point out is that we did, the Board people on the Shared Services Committee did receive an apology from my co-chair of that committee, Ken Lesser, who realized that we had been sort of swung back and forth a couple of times, and he apologized for the, for the resulting speed that we were going to have to move with now. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Ginger? Thank you, Ginger. Okay, and our Wellness Committee, Diane?
We met last week and we had a rather good discussion with Hal Evans about security, different protocols and so forth in the schools, and I think we came away with a better understanding, and I think he came away with a better understanding of what some of our concerns were. And I think when school starts up again and we start up the committees again in the fall, we'll continue that discussion.
Any questions for Diane? Diane, it was a great meeting. It's amazing how much security is in the buildings and how many issues have to come up and be covered. Thank you. All right, so meeting schedule, we have a Special Board of Ed meeting on May ninth, two thousand eighteen, at six o'clock, and another Special Board of Ed meeting on May eleventh, at two o'clock. WEC is meeting on May fourteenth, at four-thirty. Policy and Planning Committee is on May fourteenth, at five-thirty. Is that still on, Polly? Yes? Student Program and Services is on May fifteenth, at six-thirty. Craig Council, May sixteenth, at three o'clock. Oh, that's their annual meeting?
Yeah, actually, I think that's been changed to the morning. Yeah, that's the-
Okay.
Yeah, that's seven-thirty AM.
That's why I used to go, Paul.
Yeah, yeah. I was, I was all, I was all in until, no, no, I'm going.
So that's at seven-thirty AM? Okay. Finance and Informational Management Committee is on May twenty-second, at six o'clock. All right, is there any unfinished business?
I just have a question.
Sure.
Mr. Emmett, on the Special Board of Ed meeting five-nine tomorrow night-
Yes.
Is that executive session?
No, I expect at this point in time that that is open to the public. I have not heard yet from the individual requesting the hearing, but I'm assuming at this point in time that it is a public meeting.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And we expect it to be lengthy?
I would imagine it would be, yes.
John?
Yeah, I, I don't know if I, it's unfinished business or not, but do we know if the Town Council has approved our recommended motion to engage in Phase One? I know they were meeting about that last night as well, as well as the custodial issue. Do we know that both of them-
I didn't hear anything. Anybody hear anything? No. And usually-
They met, they met Monday, didn't they?
No, I think, don't they meet off weeks from last?
They, they met yesterday.
Last night, yeah.
They approved the MOU last-
To build on what you said, Mr. Cassio, with regard to the Phase One component, we did meet with town leadership about that and explained our plans in an effort of, you know, being transparent and looking to move forward and engage them in the process. So what we talked about in terms of the funding for this Phase One would be the utilization of the one percent reserve fund. So I was under the impression that that would be going to council. I don't know if that's happened, I'll certainly find out.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
And the same thing, if we could just find out in, an update on Friday regarding the custodial, the shared services issue, if they approved that particular-
They did.
They did. That they approved last night.
That was approved.
Yeah, yeah. Just to recap, if you've got the, and that, of course, is the numbers, asking you to do it off the top of your head. But approximately, correct me if I'm wrong, was there, what was the, what would the charge have been, or the cost have been, going back to the, the district, you know, Phase One of the-
Oh, it's right here. I have it.
There was a-
There was a, a range.
Yeah.
Seventy-five to something.
Yeah, the range for Phase One was seventy-five to ninety-five thousand.
Oh, I only have the first two bases.
For, for Phase One. Oh, okay. And then, because what we have in our 1% fund-
Is sixty.
Is, yeah, is sixty. So we, we could, depending on, on the cost of it. Okay.
Okay. Any, any other unfinished business? All right. Then is there anyone wishing to make a public comment? Come on up to the podium and state your name and address. And may I remind you that we have a five-minute limit. Okay. All right. Are there any board comments this evening? John?
Absolutely. If Board of Ed members can look around the room and see all the posters that are up, these are done by the sixth-grade classes in our district, our elementary schools, inclusive of Corpus Christi will be coming tomorrow. This was the project that we did for the Memorial Day Parade Committee. So there's the labor of our works. If you look around, I think they captured, you know, original themes and ideas, what Memorial Day means to them. So I was really happy to see that we got those up, we were able to get those up. We also are ready to go for the parade on the twenty-sixth of May. We have, we have fifteen first responders who either are with the police or fire department that will be honored as parade marshals, that will go with the theme, those that have served our country as well as our community. Our essay contest winner is Gabriela Santos, an eighth grader at the Silas Dean Middle School. She's been called, and she was thrilled about that whole award. Our guest speaker is going to be retired Colonel John Wilts. He will be speaking at the cemetery. The news releases have gone out. Attempts have been made to do a feature story on this year's event. So we're really, you know, excited and honoring those that have served. So, I think we have some good imagery on the committee.
Sounds like a good thing.
We'll be marching.
Meeting, meeting place, still Motor Vehicle Department?
Motor Vehicle.
Eight-thirty, was it?
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty.
Parade starts at nine.
That's what I thought.
Okay. Diane?
Two things. Safe graduation is fast approaching, and we will be posting our link for our volunteer website. So if anyone wants to volunteer for that, we'd really appreciate it. And on behalf of Safe Grad, I'd like to thank all the businesses and citizens in town, because we've raised approximately sixty thousand dollars for the event this year.
Wow. Diane, that's great. That's amazing.
The community was, was very generous. And the last thing, I wanted to pass this on, if I can maybe get a copy of it. I came across this, the Granby Public School System has what they call a summer enrichment, enrichment academy. Several people I work with were telling me about this and brought me this brochure. But it really, it's, it's kind of along the lines of the, what we do during the year with the Keen program. But it has, and I guess it's pretty self-supporting from what they've told me, but they have different courses for grade school readiness, getting ready for first, second, third grade, getting ready for middle school, language arts. They have some stuff for high school kids about college exploration, robotics, those types of things. So many kids during the summer kind of just hang out. But I thought it was a pretty interesting program, and I think there's some other communities that are also doing something like this during the summer. So maybe Student Program and Services can-
Absolutely.
-take a look at it.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Diane.
Polly?
I just had a quick comment on the, the Friday update. I, I, I know I've mentioned this before, but this, these reports from the schools are just getting better and better. We have some wonderful pictures, and there's nothing like pictures of, of the kids to break up the, the descriptions. And it's, they're just so well put together. And, and also, I really appreciate the fact that, you know, they provide us with their list of events, each, each school does, so that if we do have the opportunity, we can, we can attend. And, and that's really very helpful. So, I know all of us try to get to as many events as we can. This is a crazy time of year, so I hope that we'll get that opportunity. So I, that teach, or the principals who were here have left, but I would love you to pass that on, sir.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, it's interesting, Paul, we're on the same wavelength here. I wanted to comment on those, too, because they're, they do, they're getting better and better. And the Board so appreciates being informed of all the events. And I also, all of us, understand the work and commitment that goes into each one from the administration and the staff. Also, I found it very interesting about the STEAM activities that were available for the families. The Board is most impressed with the turnout from the families, as the schools work to include science, technology, engineering, art, and math into fascinating activities for the families to work on together. So again, thank you for all those who organize and work those events.